Call to order a regular meeting for the Normal Town Council for January 7, 2019. Please call the roll.
Mayor Kous.
Here.
Mr. Fritz.
Here.
Mr. McBride.
Here.
Mrs. Cummings.
Here.
Mrs. Lorenz.
Here.
Mr. Preston.
Here.
Mr. McCarthy.
We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a routine justice for all.
We have six people who wish to speak tonight to council. I would ask you, we're going to bring you up in the order in which we received your request to speak. Because there are six, I'm going to be a little tighter on the three-minute limit. I'm going to ask you to hold your comments to three minutes so we can get through this and get on to the business at hand here tonight. Please state your name and your address if you wish for the record when you come forward. Our first speaker is Karen Smith.
Good evening. Karen Smith, CPA, Sheridan Road, Normal. I am here to speak against the proposed amendment to the Town East project. This amendment concerns adding the parcel located at 106 East Beaufort Street to this project, which would take away yet a third older building from the downtown area. The addition of this property has increased the cost to the developer from 29.2 million to 30 million. In exchange for accepting this request, the Town of Normal is offering to close this gap with modification to sales tax rebates and TIF increments. The article in the paper today indicated some information, and I was fortunate enough to receive a copy, but what I'm questioning is what wasn't in there. The Town of Normal is offering to relinquish TIF increments stated at 270,000 at net present value plus the sales tax rebates of 250,000 that are offered from anticipated food and beverage taxes. The fact that these values are stated in net present value and not real dollars is concerned to me because nowhere in the report is there any information about the discount factor or the time variable used in calculating those net present values. And included in the report is a specific comment from the staff that says, "Without this sales tax rebate, the project would not be feasible. The retail operation has to be successful to generate sales taxes." I was not involved earlier when this Trail East project was first approved. I recognize that opposing this amendment now may not be considered prudent as much has already been invested to date, but if the impact of this change is to threaten the success of the project, then I question whether continuing now is prudent. In my experience, construction projects are often subject to change orders which will increase the total cost. If there are any additional cost overruns, will the developer look again to Normal to put even more into this project? The staff report has provided circular reasoning to justify the acceptance of this change. Sales tax revenue is needed to support the change. The retail operation has to be successful to generate sales tax revenue. Without this increased sales tax revenue, the project will not be successful. Until the retail space is occupied on the completed circle project, I think this Trail East project should be put on hold. I also challenge the rationale that this project is not costing the town as no upfront investment is made. This ignores the reality that two buildings owned by the town are being transferred to the developer without any payment to the town by the developer. Also, as I read the report, Normal is on the hook for project costs up to a maximum of 8,430,000 through 2040. The commitment of these dollars to the uptown development by private investors means they are not available to schools, parks, roads, the library, and other projects that might benefit the townspeople. This project was structured based on the premise that TIF programs were the only tool available for development projects. I ask that the Town Council look into opportunity zones as a possible alternative for encouraging economic development. This program was created through the Tax Act passed in December 2017.
I'm going to ask you to wrap it up if you would.
There are deadlines, but I believe that the Opportunity Zone Act in that Tax Act might be a viable alternative for other funding sources. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Mike Matejka.
Good evening and thank you. Mike Matejka, 800 North School Street in Normal. As I did in October, I am speaking up tonight to affirm this project on Trail East. I think it's a fallacy when people say there is no economic contribution from this or that it harms our schools because currently you have a parking lot in two buildings that generate no tax revenue and the real possibility to build some significant structure that will greatly increase the tax revenue for our schools and for the town and for other units of government. So this is a very progressive step forward, and I also think people need to be reminded that these kind of funds are not upfront money. They're funds that come after construction is completed. And finally, just an outreach to Bush Development to use local trades and use local skilled people to build their building. Thank you.
Next speaker is Adam Kimball.
Good evening. Adam Kimball, 407 Normal Avenue. Came to speak regarding the agenda item, the ordinance approving a special use permit for a rooming house at 405 Normal Avenue. I just want to make sure the council understands what they're voting for tonight. It says a special use permit for a rooming house, but it's really allowing for concessions in the zoning code to almost triple the occupancy of what it's currently zoned for. Zoning code reads, "All parking lots shall be secured from adjacent residential properties by 10 to 20-foot landscaped area plus a fence of masonry or metal." What you're getting in this development is zero setback. So it reads 10 to 20 feet. You're getting zero. The parking is going right up to the edge of the property line, and that's allowing for additional occupants, right? So this has been a rooming house for years, for decades, up to nine occupants. The existing parking and the traffic's been on the south side. There's been a house as a buffer to the North Normal Historic District on the north side, and now the entire property is going to be developed into a parking lot right up to the edge of the property line, tripling, almost tripling the occupancy. So I just want to make sure the council understands what they're voting on. It's not just the use of the property. The property's been used for a rooming house for decades. That's not the issue, but it's the overpopulation of that small piece of property and what it's going to do to the community. So if you move forward with this tonight, you'd be setting a precedent that you'll be changing the zoning to allow for more occupants, which allow for, I estimate, roughly 72,000 of additional revenue for the developer over 30 years. That's almost $2 million. So I get it. I get the prosperity, but the precedence that will be set is that the town has voted to change the municipal code, the zoning code, to allow for more occupants for the prosperity, and it's overpopulating the space for the community. So with that precedent, what's good for 405 Normal Avenue will be good for 407 Normal Avenue to look at concessions to the zoning code to allow for more occupants, to allow for prosperity of that property as well on future agenda items. Just for the record, I have tried to collaborate with 405 Normal Avenue and with the town on a solution that worked for all parties, providing that setback, providing that green space, providing that masonry wall, giving a true buffer zone from the student section to the North Normal Historic Single Family section, and that did not want to be discussed to resolution. So I believe that's off the table, but I tried for a possible solution that would work. Thank you.
Our next speaker is James Knightwright.
Hi, my name's James Knightwright. I live at 409 Normal Avenue. My comments concern the proposed sorority house planned at 405 Normal Avenue. The Knight family has owned and lived at 409 Normal Avenue since the 1950s. Normal Avenue has had students renting nearby throughout this time. We're not concerned about more students living two doors away, and the property owner at 409, my mother-in-law, is fine with the addition of the sorority as our new neighbors. What does concern me, though, is the process taken to approve this structure. It has specifically excluded most of the people living adjacent to the construction. The only public hearing was held in December, scheduled for a time when students had left for winter break. This meeting tonight is taking place at a time when many students have not yet returned for the spring semester because the term hasn't begun. I just completed a master's degree at ISU, and a major component of my studies has been civic engagement. This process of the Normal planning did not invite good citizenry. I think that Normal wants to encourage civic engagements with student residents, many of whom live here for four years, possibly longer for studies as they pursue additional degrees. These student neighbors may be in Normal longer than households who move here for work training or corporate transfers. Similarly, I'm concerned about the 6:00 AM to 9:00 AM parking ban on Normal Avenue. School Street's only one block away and beginning just south of Willow, it allows 24-hour parking and has no 6:00 to 9:00 AM ban. This truly inconveniences residents as we must keep cars off the street during the three-hour restricted period. Further, students are, in effect, discouraged from early morning classes or from arriving on campus until they can legally park after 9:00. It's another subtle but truly inconvenient way that this block is not treated respectfully. It's another subtle way to disengage the student residents of our block. Again, I do not speak against the sorority. I speak for the process in which the residents get input and which their values and their concerns. I encourage you to do the right thing and send the special use permit back to the zoning board of appeals. Encourage participation from all of the people affected, most specifically those who live in the rental properties adjacent to student residents of Normal. You may be within the letter of the law, but by the actions of the December 20 meeting, but you're not within the spirit of the law. Encourage good citizens and invite their participation. Thank you.
Next speaker is Stan Nord.
Hi, my name's Stan Nord, 1020 Balsam in Normal. It seems the focus has shifted from representing the needs of the citizens who elected you and pay for all this government to spending their taxes on once. The developer for Trail East communicated early on there was not enough need for this building to be profitable without incentives. So this council gave them over $10 million in incentives and property to build what you want. Now you are asked to take nearly another million dollars from taxpayers, close a successful sales and property tax generating business, and demolish even more of our beloved historic downtown. As many of your constituents have voiced, there is no need for this building. There is vacant retail and restaurant space which Uptown One has never been able to fill. Vacancies are scattered about Uptown. There is an abundance of available office space throughout the community. In fact, State Farm has a 13-story office building for sale, which is valued for less than the incentives you have already approved for Trail East. There is no need for additional office space. The top floors of Uptown One are luxury apartments. Many of these are still not rented. Regardless of need, taxpayers should not be subsidizing $42,000 to $100,000 a month luxury apartments. Taxpayers were told Uptown One was a pilot. This pilot has borne no fruit. The definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over and expecting a different result. When I talk with your constituents and they learn about what Uptown has cost them and the lack of need it cannot even fill, their blood begins to boil. I am representing the view of many of your constituents. The Uptown Normal concept came about in the late 90s. Back then was a completely different economy. State Farm was expanding. Diamond Star was booming. Eureka Williams was building vacuums, and our malls were full. Since, there have been two recessions. Diamond Star has closed. Eureka has moved. State Farm has downsized. Hundreds of businesses have shrunk or closed, and the internet has decimated brick-and-mortar retail. The Uptown plan and checkboxes were based on a past economy. Unfortunately, the reality of a changed economy and consumer habits are obstacles which must be considered today. These realities prevent developers from building what you want without huge incentives because they recognize the need is not there. If this developer will not build Trail East without receiving another million in incentives, then this is a blessing in disguise because there is still no need for taxpayers to fund this building. We cannot continue to funnel huge amounts of time, money, and effort into what Uptown wanted to be. Normal is much more than just Uptown. There are real needs in other parts of Normal. As members of government, the decisions you make have a direct impact on how much, through taxes, you are taking from your constituents. When I think about what decision I would make if I were in your position, I remember Luke, Chapter 3, when the tax collectors asked John the Baptist what they needed to do to enter the kingdom of God. John said, "Take no more in taxes than what is needed." So I pray you will consider the decisions before you tonight and in the future and ask yourself, for the vast majority of the people you represent, is this really needed?
And our last speaker of the evening is Mark Terratilli.
Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year. I want to say a couple of thank yous. First of all, Pam, for the last minute addition on the schedule, and Angela, thank you for amending the minutes for me. I appreciate that. I want to make a quick note on Mr. Matejka's comments about the taxes and the property isn't generating tax money right now. That's true. That's because the town took those roles, or took those off the rolls years ago in anticipation of this project, and that's why the schools have not been receiving the money from those properties. This isn't just about development, not about art or incentives. It is about those things, but it's much more than that. This is really about the soul of this community and who we're going to be. A year ago, almost, 51 weeks ago, I sat here with a bunch of other people, and we implored the council that nobody was opposed to the development, but we wanted to see it done without massive subsidies. We wanted to see it done with financing mechanisms that preserved integrity. We wanted to be able to preserve the historic buildings and the artwork. None of that is happening. That's why people are upset. It's not about the building itself. Those concerns have been dismissed. We were told, "Well, we can't do it. It's, you know, these tuck pointings, it can't be done." Well, now suddenly it can be done, and it costs money. Well, we don't have money for that, but suddenly we're promising the developer 10 times as much out of thin air. So that's the nature that I'm talking about. Other people have alluded to it tonight. What's going on with this process? We're looking at new market tax credits that are designed for truly blighted areas, not Normal. They're a zero-sum game, so we're taking opportunities away from places like East St. Louis and Carroll where that money is really needed to try and put up a really nice shiny building where we already have some. It was told to us that this has been in the plan all along, the destruction of these buildings. It's not. Anybody out there, you can look it up. Normal.org, government, planning, approved plans, Uptown redevelopment as well as Uptown 2.0. Look at the footprints. They do not include these old buildings. This has been a wishful add-on in recent years. We don't need to tear those buildings down. So we've been told, you know, "Don't get too hasty. Your comment time is coming." Well, this is it. I'm saying, let's change the plans. Let's shift the mass clockwise. Keep the old buildings. Incorporate the facades. Build behind them with a setback. Keep the artwork or possibly move it into a public space. Build out over the parking spaces on a second, third, and fourth floor. There are ways to do this that can preserve the character of this town, and that's what was in the study. The FAR Plan said, "Preserve the historic nature of Uptown," downtown at the time. The market surveys of the people in this community said they prefer the historic nature of the architecture, and that's what they want to see. That's what's in the plan. That's what we need to be doing. There are ways to do it. Now, if a delay is going to cost more, well, this is the process that's been put before us, is that now is the time for comment. Now is the time to make changes. As we've seen, apparently money becomes available. So this is really a battle of who we're going to be as a community, how we're going to conduct our business. We haven't been opposed to the development per se, but it's how we're doing it and what we're giving up. Last comment I'll make is that you say, "Well, old doesn't mean historic."
I'm going to ask you to wrap it up, please.
These are irreplaceable, and they're some of the most iconic and quaint buildings in Uptown. We need to do better. Please change the plan. Thank you.
We move to the omnibus agenda, and I will comment. It's the smallest omnibus agenda I've seen in my career as mayor. Two items on that agenda, and will be taken by one vote unless a council member would like to pull an item for discussion. Please call the roll. Oh, items, we need an approval. Second. Items on the agenda are approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of December 17, 2018, and approval of Town of Normal expenditures for payment as of January 3, 2019. And there are amended minutes, a small change in the minutes that was put at your desk. Please call the roll.
Mr. Fritz.
Hi.
Mr. McBride.
Hi.
Mrs. Cummings.
Hi.
Mrs. Lorenz.
Hi.
Mr. Preston.
Hi.
Mayor Kous.
Aye. The omnibus agenda is approved. Our first item of business on general orders is an ordinance approving a special use permit for a rooming house at 405 Normal Avenue. Approval. Thank you.
Second.
Is there a discussion on this item?
Sure, I'll make a few comments, or actually I'll invite Mercy Davidson to come forward because I, if you don't mind, Mercy, just in response to a couple of comments that we heard during the public comment portion, maybe some clarification or correction, and I wanted to share that with you so that you have that information before you vote.
Sure. Just during the course of the public comments, a comment was made, I believe, the way I understood the, Mr. Kimball, that we're asking to permit double the occupancy permitted by code, and in fact, as a rooming house in this zoning classification, what they're proposing at 23 residences is less than code would permit. Also, there was a statement about the required green space being 20 feet between the property line to the north and to the west, and it's actually 10 feet. And indeed, what they are proposing is zero. They're proposing a privacy fence. That is true. But I, just to clarify, you can actually go down to 10 feet, not just, not 20, and we're not talking about rezoning the property. So just to clarify.
Questions or comments on this? Mr. Fritz?
Just to clarify, too, the zoning on the property is R3, correct?
That's correct.
So if I remember right from the report, could be 16, 16 units?
Oh, actually, as a rooming house itself, it could hold up to 26 people. But if they were to redevelop it as an apartment...
Apartment, you could have, I was reading maybe 60, 64?
Potentially, yeah. Again, similar sites of this square footage and size in the campus area over the past several years have been developed somewhere between 12 and 16 units, which essentially with four people in a unit. So pretty typically, we could get 48 to 64 people on a site this size, based on past experience.
And most likely...
Without going through a special use rooming house process, as a conventional apartment building.
And that most likely would be a structure that would have parking on...
On the underfloor parking.
Underfloor, okay.
Further on this item? Mrs. Lorenz?
A question for either Mercy or Greg. To the commenter who shared some concern about the process, did you have anything that you feel like was missed in that? What would you have anticipated the students maybe could have had input about this? Well, if I could jump in before Mercy starts. You know, I've heard that comment a little bit from others recently in terms of meeting, council having meeting and discussing issues with the absence of the student population. If we built the public meetings around the student, when the students are in session, that would be probably nine times a year when we wouldn't have a meeting. You know, and this body meets 24 times a year. So when we consider the breaks, you just, the summer breaks and the Christmas holiday breaks and spring break, you know, that would be nine times when we would either meet and not have significant items on the agenda or not meet at all. So it is a little bit of a struggle to build our meeting schedule around the ISU student schedule, but certainly we want to incorporate them and engage them as much as possible, but I think building our meeting schedule around them might be a little bit of a challenge because of the times when ISU is on break. Well, I guess I, go ahead.
You know, all those things are true, and I guess from our perspective, the change isn't that different, in my opinion, from a student's perspective. It's been a rooming house forever. Now it's going to be a different kind of rooming house. I can't imagine it will be more or less disruptive, positive or negative, to the surrounding students because it will probably seem really similar, except better managed. So we are hoping it is much better managed and quieter, but it will still be a rooming house. So I guess of all the things I would be concerned about students being missing for, like this one wouldn't be the one that would even occur to me as, wow, we really need to get input on this. At the same time, I will say that the representative at ISU who deals with Greek life and who cares about this stuff is his full-time job, he's fully, has been fully aware of this, and I know they're very excited to be able to meet some emerging demand for a little bit more Greek housing, and it's really hard to accomplish in this community just because there isn't a lot of property available. So, you know, and we're not, we're not for or against Greek housing. This happens to be a development that generally meets code, and we can support for any reason, but we feel like the students at least have been represented by the folks at ISU who have been plugged into this for months.
Okay. Good, fair enough.
Mr. Fritz?
Another question regarding the privacy fence. Height, material, I know the report talked a little bit, or the minutes, one of the other...
Questions or comments on this?
Just to clarify too, the zoning on the property is R3, correct?
That's correct.
So if I remember right from the report, could be 16, 16 units?
Oh, actually, as a rooming house itself, it could hold up to 26 people.
Right.
But if they were to redevelop it as an apartment.
Apartment, you could have, I was reading maybe 60, 64?
Potentially, yeah. Again, similar sites of this square footage and size in the campus area over the past several years have been developed somewhere between 12 and 16 units, which essentially with four people in a unit. So pretty typically, we could get 48 to 64 people on a site this size based on past experience.
And most likely.
Without going through a special use rooming house process as a conventional apartment building.
And that most likely would be a structure would have parking on.
Underfloor parking.
Underground. Okay.
Further on this item? Mrs. Lorenz?
A question for either Mercy or Greg. To the commenter who shared some concern about the process, did you have anything that you feel like was missed in that? What would you have anticipated the students maybe could have had input about this? Well, if I could jump in before Mercy starts, you know, I've heard that comment a little bit from others recently in terms of meeting, council having meeting and discussing issues with, with the absence of the student population. If we built the public meetings around the student, when the students are in session, that would be probably nine times a year when we wouldn't have a meeting, you know, and this, this body meets 24 times a year. So when we consider the breaks, you just, the summer breaks and the Christmas holiday breaks and spring break, you know, that would be nine times when we would either meet and not have significant items on the agenda or not meet at all. So it is a little bit of a struggle to build our meeting schedule around the ISU student schedule, but certainly we want to incorporate them and engage them as much as possible, but I think building our meeting schedule around them might be a little bit of a challenge because of the times when ISU is on break. Well, I guess I, go ahead.
You know, it, all those things are true and I guess from our perspective, the change isn't that different, in my opinion, from a student's perspective. It's been a rooming house forever. Now it's going to be a different kind of rooming house. I can't imagine it will be more or less disruptive, positive or negative to the surrounding students because it will probably seem really similar, except better managed. So we are hoping it is much better managed and quieter, but it will still be a rooming house. So I guess of all the things I would be concerned about students being missing for, like this one wouldn't be the one that would even occur to me as, wow, we really need to get input on this. At the same time, I will say that the representative at ISU who deals with Greek life and who cares about this stuff is his full-time job, he's fully, has been fully aware of this and I know they're very excited to be able to meet some emerging demand for a little bit more Greek housing and it's really hard to accomplish in this community just because there isn't a lot of property available. So, you know, and we're not, we're not for or against Greek housing. This happens to be a development that generally meets code and we can support for any reason, but we feel like the students at least have been represented by the folks at ISU who've been plugged into this for months.
Okay. Good, fair enough.
Mr. Fritz?
Another question regarding the privacy fence, height, material. I know the report talked a little bit or the minutes, one of the other, Mr. Kimball mentioned it as well. So I, I know, I think the Fiji House or whatever's on the corner, on the back of that property, on the alley side of that property, there's a chain link fence that's pretty beat up. So fences tend to take the brunt of things and if we're, if there is no setback, we have a privacy fence. The mention of vinyl doesn't, leaves me a little cold that it's going to hold up for very long with parking right next to it and the like. So I'm curious where we are with that and what options we might.
Well, again, that was discussed at the public hearing and as I understand, the applicant is more than happy to acquiesce to whatever the demands are for fence material. And again, I think the same concerns are expressed about, you know, the PVC type fencing is a little hard to maintain. Fences in general, a little difficult to maintain in the campus area, but certainly the parking lot will be constructed with a monolithic curb that would prevent a car from bumping into it. And as Mercy mentioned before, yes, there's, there's a required setback that anticipates having landscaping to act as a buffer for headlights and that type of thing, but certainly a solid fence would actually probably be more effective in screening like headlights and potentially some noise activity.
How tall would the fence probably be?
Per code, it could be six feet tall and that's what their plan is to do.
And if it's, if you all think it would be better as a decorative wooden fence, the developer is happy to do that. So I don't know, like which one, I would defer to Greg, actually.
Yeah, probably from a maintenance perspective, it's easier to manage a wood fence for replacement purposes and, you know, replacing the occasional picket as opposed to a six-foot section that may get knocked over or bumped out.
A situation like this, I don't like to get down to micromanaging something like that, but I, just, just to be on record, you know, you, and you acknowledge it, fencing is difficult to maintain in a, in an area such as this and, you know, I, I would encourage, I guess, consideration of a more durable fence material. I think too, the other thing is, you know, we're talking about a special use permit. So the word zoning was thrown around a little bit here and there and earlier and, you know, the nature of the special use is, is a negotiated, negotiated thing where there's some trade-offs where, you know, maybe we do allow, for instance, the parking, the setback situation and the like, but in the, you know, there's a trade-off here and one of the things that's attractive, as I see it, is the, you know, is that the control, the density, the lower density, the better managed property and, and all of us have heard of issues, I know in the minutes, one of the, of the, of the meeting, one of the residents from University Court that I've had numerous conversations and exchanged emails with over the years was very supportive of this and glad to see a change because that has been a problem, property, problem area up there.
Thank you. Further comments? Please call the roll.
Mr. McBride.
Hi.
Mrs. Cummings.
Hi.
Mrs. Lorenz.
Hi.
Mr. Preston.
Hi.
Mr. Fritz?
Hi.
Mayor Kuss?
Hi. The ordinance is approved. Item eight is a presentation of the Trail East Concept Plan. Gentlemen and ladies.
Yeah, we're going to start out with Mercy sharing some details regarding the schedule and how we got to this point and what happens from this point forward and then the design team is going to talk about the project in detail. I think what we'll do is hold off on some of the amended agreement discussion until the next item, if that's okay, and just focus on the design components at this point.
Thanks. So as you know, starting back in the early 2000s with the Uptown Renewal Plan, some of the key components of the plan were to build Uptown Circle and then surround it with five significant buildings. So far, we have three of those in place, the Children's Museum first, then Uptown Station, and then the building I work in, One Uptown Circle. The project before you tonight will be building number four on the northeast portion of the circle. I'm not going to get into the design details because I'll leave that to the developer and his design team, but I wanted to start off by just laying out the public process so that people are clear on all the opportunities for public comment and just how this procedure actually will work in the coming weeks. The first process will be the Historic Preservation Commission. As you can see on the screen, they will be meeting tomorrow at 12:30. It's their regularly scheduled monthly meeting and on their agenda is the demolition permits for 104, 106, and 108 East Beaufort. So 104 is the building that formerly housed the pod and the town has owned that property for quite a long time. It's been vacant for a little while. 106 currently houses Windy City Wieners and is under contract by the developer to be purchased. And then 108 has been vacant for quite a while and most recently was the Slingshot Co-Work Space and prior to that, it was the Uptown Renewal Office. So those three buildings are on the table for the commission to look at tomorrow for demolition permits. If, so the Historic Commission's job is to determine whether these properties warrant historic landmark designation or some sort of historic protection. That's what their decision is based on. So tomorrow, if they determine that these buildings are historically significant, they can decline to approve these demolition permits. If they do that, then the council has 30 days to take action and taking action would be doing something to start the landmarking process and that clock has to run for 30 days to give you that opportunity. If you take no action within 30 days, then demolition could proceed at any time. If the commission tomorrow decides that they, they're willing to approve the demolition permits, then demolition can proceed. So there is not necessarily going to be any town council action after tomorrow regarding these demolition permits, but there could be. So really, we just have to wait and see what happens tomorrow and then go from there. The second process is the Uptown Design Review Commission. So the designs that you're going to see tonight are going to be conceptual, fairly detailed, but, but still a concept in that you're not going to see dimensions on the windows and exact materials and exact lighting fixtures and parking lot lighting and there are details that are just conceptual at this point, but the Uptown Design Commission is the body that actually has to approve the detailed designs and we anticipate that that will be happening soon. We will be calling that the preliminary plan and that will be filed with the town clerk, I'm going to get my dates right, that will be filed with the clerk to go to the Uptown Design Commission on February 11th. So February 11th is a Monday, they meet at 4 o'clock in this building and that's a public hearing. People are welcome to attend. The Uptown Design Commission can make a final decision on a project if it meets code. If any code variances are required, then it has to come back to the town council for the variances to be approved. Given that all three of the buildings thus far built on the Uptown Circle have required some variances, it's pretty likely that this project will require a couple of little variances and so you may see it. If you did, it would be on Monday, February 18th. The types of variances that these projects are getting are similar. They're pretty technical. They're things like maybe the window percentage isn't perfect or maybe there's some difference in the height on one of the floors or that sort of thing, but you can see from the three buildings that are built, in my opinion, they're all very attractive and perfectly in the spirit of the plan. So, so we'll just have to see based on what happens with the Uptown Design Commission, whether or not you'll be seeing the plan again for variances. The last part of the public process will be Planning Commission because the property right now, the Trail East project area is just a bunch of little properties all mashed together. These are just, you know, over time, these have been subdivided into little parcels and in order to build this project, it needs to be one lot of record. And in doing that, they will combine the lots. The public alley will be vacated and replaced with some sort of public access easement, which the developer will talk about a little bit more. Utility easements will be put in place, so all the public, important things for the public will be protected in easements and that, that goes through the Planning Commission. So there's another public hearing on that and that would be on Thursday, March 7th at 5:00. Everything that goes to Planning Commission comes back to you, so you will be seeing that again on Monday, March 18th. So it's a lot of dates. It's not the most exciting thing to talk about, but it really is the point of entry for anyone who has comments that they'd like to make about this project. And now I will turn it over to the development team to talk about the fun part, which is the building itself.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, and city staff for allowing us to be here tonight to present. My name's Jared Engler. I'm with Bush Construction and Bush Development. Will be the developer and the general contractor building the Trail East project. So tonight, we're going to talk about the schematic design portion of the project, give you guys an idea of where we're at right now with, with the design, the floor plans and the site plans. I've got my team here with me on the design side. John Bishop runs up the architectural side of the project and Neil will be here to discuss the site portions of the project as well.
All right. It's a pleasure being here this evening to talk a little bit about, about the Trail East project. I'm going to run you through some of the images of the project. This is, this is Trail East as seen from the intersection with, of the circle and Beaufort Street. The building's about 120,000 square feet. It's a combination of a brick and ornamental panel on the exterior. We've, we've done our best to, to create some visual interest by, by doing a couple of different types of vocabulary of construction on the exterior. We've included the, the code required colonnade or loggia at the, at the circle and up Constitution Boulevard and that's, that's deep enough that I would actually allow for, for possibly some seating depending upon what the final, final occupant is on, on the first floor of the building at the, at the circle side. This is a view from Children's Discovery Museum. As you can see, as we move around onto Beaufort Street, one of the things that we've tried to do is, is articulate some, some ornamentation into the brick in order to, to soften the more contemporary building as seen at the corner and, and, and sort of direct it down toward the existing construction further to the east on Beaufort. And this would be a view from across the street on, on Beaufort and here you can see that at the, at the 108 location, we're including a, a pedestrian access back to the parking on, on the backside so that, so that visitors have the opportunity to be able to, to come through and access Beaufort Street businesses as well. And a little bit more detail on the ornamentation happening on, on the three-story portion of the Beaufort Street face. And a view from, further down Beaufort from the air where you see the identity on, on the east side of the building as we're introducing more happening in that area. There's a, you'll notice there's a bump out on the, the right side of the screen, first floor. That would be where the, the food marketplace, food incubator would be going on, on first floor space. There is some conversation currently happening with, with one of the committed tenants to expand their square footage on second floor. So that might actually be a two-story extension in, in that location depending upon what the final decision is. And then there is the view from, from College on, on the east looking toward the building. One of the things that I think is important to note with, with the site is that, is that parking lot at Trail East was, was a temporary parking lot, understanding that this project was going to happen at some point in time. And as a result, there are a number of, of the typical code requirements that were, were sort of kicked down, down the way, including open trash and recycle containers, so rather than them being currently enclosed. So one of the things that the project does is it incorporates an enclosed trash and recycling area for all of the Beaufort Street businesses along that section so that everything would be enclosed and located in, in one convenient location and, and the whole thing would be made a bit more attractive in the process of doing that. We've also managed to bring in some of the landscaping that, that would otherwise have been required if it weren't a temporary, temporary parking lot. And there's our view from the, from the west looking toward the east. So again, the architectural style as, as the building breaks down is complimentary, but, but different enough to, to sort of break it down and not make it feel like it's one massive building in, with one style. Entry to the building would happen in the center, the center portion between the two sections of it, with that being entry lobby and then circulation to the upper floors. And very quickly, we'll run through a, a few floor plans. First floor of the building and for all of these plans, north would be to the left of the screen. So for the first floor of the building, we have one tenant interested in taking the, the north space, the large square, that would be a food marketplace or food incubator, sort of a food court model with a, with a centralized kitchen to allow for, for upcoming businesses to be able to utilize that in development of their, of their product or menu. The, the blue tenant space located on the south side or, or the right side of the lobby is the potential home for Windy City Wiener within the building and then the, the other green tenant space on the right side would be a future commercial space. We move to the second floor. Again, this may actually extend out over the green area toward the top of the gray area, over the top of the screen. This would be a single tenant. There's already a letter of intent for, for leasing of, of this space. And then likewise, the, the third floor is also already fully committed. Fourth floor, which includes some, some potential terracing or, or green roof area off of the circle, is currently subdivided for, for three tenant spaces. At the north end, again to the left, there is a tenant that is looking for 5,500 square feet and is looking at an option for the remainder of that floor and there are currently negotiations going on for the, for the entire south portion of the, of the space as well. And then the fifth floor would include a, a number of market rate apartments as well as a common room space for, for building tenants and additionally some terrace space on, on the exterior, both private and for the, for the building tenants as a whole and then some level of green roof in that area as well.
Thanks, John. What I'd like to do is walk you through the site plan and it's really my pleasure to be working on this project and I'll make a comment as I conclude, but to, to hit on some of the items that have really been months in the making, collaborative effort certainly with, with your staff to get it to the point where we are tonight. We have, as John had mentioned, this would be north, College Avenue along this northern edge and what we're really trying to do is enhance the traffic and access to the buildings on Beaufort Street, the front onto Beaufort Street and certainly also the access to this building as well. And one of the, one of the things that Mercy had mentioned in her report is this blue area is all a matter of utility easements and ingress egress. So we've got quite a corridor that we've involved here with this U-shaped in and out, bi-directional by the way. And just to give you an idea of what the improvements have been at mid-block behind Beaufort Street, right now, the alley width is about 12 and a half feet. From the face of the back of the building to a power pole is, is barely a lane. What we have in mind here is a 20-foot in the blue area and then actually there seems more fringe area in this red painted median so that, you know, that your normal delivery truck can easily get in and out and, and certainly take care of whatever deliveries are necessary in this area. In addition to that, we would also have a, a loading dock or excuse me, a loading area here along College on that southern lane of College Avenue eastbound that could in fact be used for some larger trucks to load or unload. And then certainly the idea that they could back into this area is a possibility as well. So, so what we look at is the site being greatly improved and that would be with lighting. Some of the things that John had in his rendering had shown landscaping in that parking lot that does not exist today. The access, as I mentioned, the dumpsters would be another area enclosed and certainly greatly improved in their aesthetics. This would be a community dumpster for those businesses along Beaufort Street in this area and then for the building itself, another enclosed dumpster that you had seen on the, on the rendering. So we're trying to really clean this up. We're trying to make sure the power poles are removed in lieu of underground power supply. Drainage improvements would be part of the project as well and really just put this, you know, in a state that it needs to be to, to serve not only the new building, but also the businesses along Beaufort Street as well. So there's a, and John, I think there's another slide with the promenade. This, this would be the corridor in orange along the eastern edge of the building and, you know, quite an entry really from Beaufort Street on into the courtyard area of the building itself and the lobby to allow pedestrian access, very inviting in order to, to come through that area to the, to what would in essence be the backside of the building. And then John, I think there's another, another slide for a close-up that would be a landscaped area that was shown on those renderings that John had as well, that would be the front door of the building into that lobby area as well. And as Mercy had pointed out, what we would be doing is certainly mashing the landscaping that's, you know, in the Uptown area presently and making sure that we have, you know, some very inviting space. As you saw with the earlier rendering, we would have some outdoor seating in that promenade as shown here and then some of the other outdoor seating would be a 12-foot area along here that's by the access, curbed for safety's sake, that would allow for the food court area to have some of that outside dining along with the courtyard itself. So it's, it's a situation where we're, we've looked long and hard, this has been quite a process, to put these drawings together and make sure that they function the, the way they are intended and it's a project. And it's a project that I take great pride in. Longtime resident of the town and having an opportunity to be an occupant in your building as well, that is really special. And we want to really make sure this is right. And certainly that's been your intent, and that's what you've accomplished with the uptown area, and we want to make sure that that trend continues. So Wayne, I think, will answer some of the questions in terms of all the hard questions, right Wayne?
Yeah, thanks Neil. So just a few comments from a staff perspective. Actually Neil did a great job covering a lot of things, but just wanted to touch on a few other issues and a few of the same issues. But again, dumpster enclosures, we've done this, shared common waste and recycling on other blocks. We've helped facilitate that on a private basis, and that's what's proposed here. And I think the developer agrees to that. So I think that'll work out well, and it works out really pretty well for the other property owners on the block. The access easement, I think, is actually very good for deliveries, much improved over what there is now, really because that alley area is much wider and it can be a two-way access through there. Right now, a lot of the properties along East Beaufort take deliveries from East Beaufort itself, the street, which is fine, hasn't been an issue. They also take it, smaller deliveries from the rear. So this site layout actually allows for bigger trucks to pull in and back in if necessary. And we see that quite a bit. And a lot of these businesses take smaller deliveries, so this site allows for that as well. Neil had mentioned College Avenue as a potential area. So when we built College, that street was sort of designed, I have a pointer here too if it works, it's not working, but there it is, barely. So this was a small acceleration lane here, and then we needed a small turn lane here. So really this lane, the south lane there, is available for other uses. And so we went ahead and paved everything, but actually that can be cleared for larger trucks if the council approves that. So that could actually be signed for an area that people can park for deliveries. So in general, deliveries and access, I think, is better for the site. Utilities, Neil sort of mentioned, all the utilities will be undergrounded. We've done this on other sites in uptown. So and I think in the original redevelopment agreement, there's a cost participation where the town pays a portion of that undergrounding for primarily the businesses that are along East Beaufort Street. So this will include all the businesses along East Beaufort that take overhead power. There will be conversion of those properties to the underground power as well. So really, we'll clean up the entire site and all the utilities there will be undergrounded. Parking, I think John had mentioned a little bit about, and you might recall, when we cleared this site, originally we bought some properties, we cleared the site, and it was originally developed as a temporary parking area. And it's served its purpose well, always with the intention that there would be a development on this site. So right now, it is used for public parking. There are some reserved spaces on that site. So the reserved spaces will be relocated to other surface lots or parking decks, and the other public parking will be absorbed by parking decks primarily or other street or surface parking in this case. Staging, Jared may talk a little bit about this later on. He's probably looking at how the construction site will look right now. But I think the staging, construction staging for this site will be similar to other sites like the One Uptown site. That was a very tight site. This site's a little bit bigger. But we may offer the, what we call the water department parking lot to the north for a contractor staging and parking area that's available and very close to the site. And Contractor Bush may stage some on the site. There's enough room to do some staging on the site as well. Street closures, we'll look at that. And again, in conjunction with Bush, we'll talk about that as the construction plans get developed. But we anticipate there'll be some partial lane closures during the construction, similar to what we've seen in the past. For example, Constitution Boulevard may be shut down, limited closures on the Circle and perhaps East Beaufort. And then on College Avenue, as that southern lane may be available, that could be shut down, we think, for maybe a longer period of time for the contractors' deliveries and staging. The other issue is, and Jared can talk more about this, is coordination and communication, again, very critical as we move into the construction process. Most of the property owners and businesses are very aware of this project at this point, but we'll continue that communication as we go along. We have had some discussions and actually had a meeting Friday where we invited the property owners and businesses to come and learn more about the project. But that kind of communication will continue. And as we start construction, there'll actually be a project superintendent assigned to the site by Bush, and that will be a direct contact for the property owners and businesses at that time. And they can always call town staff as well. But that's worked out very well in the past, that kind of communication strategy. But I think that's all the comments I have.
Thanks Wayne. So yeah, most of what Wayne touched on is, we've already talked about, but some of the big ones for us is going to be really safety with this being a project that's so, you know, streets on all sides, a lot of pedestrian traffic, a lot of foot traffic, a lot of cars. So we're gonna, it's gonna be a key to keep the site fenced and secured at all times while we're working, which will be important. Again, having that staging across the streets is gonna be very helpful, so we appreciate that. It is a tight site. I mean, this is a large project, large building, to be able to build on this small footprint. So a lot of just-in-time deliveries, we're gonna have to use to make sure the materials are coming in and getting basically put up on the building almost simultaneously upon arrival. That'll be key. There will be some lane closures. We'll plan those well in advance and make sure city staff is aware and understands what we're trying to do there. Really, a lot of it's gonna happen when we're erecting the structural steel. We're gonna have a lot of loads of steel coming in and have large cranes. So having that access and clearing kind of a safe zone around the building to erect that steel is gonna be pretty key. Beyond that, a lot of it, we'll try to stage from inside the site to minimize the exposure to the cars and traffic. We also are looking at, because construction trailers take up such a large footprint, you know, the job site trailers for ourselves as well of our key subcontractors, we're possibly looking at some, maybe some vacant space that we could lease in the area here to stage our construction office out of. That would free up quite a bit of space on site to have more staging available to us. Talked about communication with neighbors. That's key on any project we do. We do a lot of projects like this that are right downtown or in a heavily populated area. So we make it a point to really visit all the neighbors and all the people that have a stake in this project to make sure they have constant communication with us. Our superintendent's always checking in to make sure that we're not blocking someone's access to their facility, you know, or blocking pedestrian traffic. All those things are gonna be key to make sure that we're good neighbors, because we're gonna be here for a couple of years building this project, and we don't want to impact, impact as few people as possible. I'm gonna touch briefly on our schedule. So we've got a pre-construction schedule right now. We're still building the actual construction schedule. Mercy touched on quite a few of the dates. Our schedule accounts for those dates right now, the approvals. Tonight's a key approval to basically to get the schematic design kind of rubber stamped and moving forward. And then that other key date was the March 18th council approval of the subdivision and code variance discussion. That kind of helps us continue with our design. But we're gonna break the project up into four bid packages so we can kind of do the design and the bidding over a phase cycle so we can facilitate getting on site quicker and making sure that we hit our commitments and our LOIs with our tenants to make sure we get the building delivered when we're supposed to. Our first bid release is really the site civil portion, so underground utilities, power relocations, storm, sanitary water, those types of things. We're looking to have that design complete by February 1st. And then those, we have about a three to four week bid window and awarding contracts, things like that. And then we're anticipating that work to start on site at the end of March. So that's kind of the soonest we would like to be on site, which is fairly aggressive. But that first bid package is a pretty simple package of utility work. The second bid package is the foundations for the building as well as all the site concrete. So the sidewalks, curb and gutter, concrete paving, those types of things. That will be, design will be complete by March, I'm sorry, yeah, March 1st. And then we will move into the bidding process for that. And then that work would start on site around May 15th for that. The third package is our structural steel, so that's basically the superstructure of the building. That would be done by May 1st on the design, and then that work would start about mid-June for that. And then the last bid pack is really the balance of the project, all the mechanical, electrical, drywall, painting, all those types of finishes. Those plans would be done around June, first part of June, and we would start that work in mid-July. So, and then we're looking at a substantial completion date right now of August 1st of 2020. We're hoping to potentially improve on that, but that's right now based on what we've currently projected.
So those are the design team comments, so that's a lot of detail. Obviously, this item's on the agenda tonight though to get your thoughts and feedback and reaction to the concept design. But I do want to say that staff has been working with Bush and Farnsworth since February of 2017 on this. And we're excited, very excited, to present this concept design to you and talk about specifics in terms of timelines and being able to get going with the project. And I think it's a great story. It's something that supports the reason why we, back in May, asked to extend the TIP so that we could, we could complete the uptown project. And so this is a long time in the works, and we did acquire the properties for this project way back in 2006 in anticipation of a future Trail East project, and the future is here. And so I just wanted to put out there that staff is thrilled to be able to be at this point and to present this to you and get your feedback.
Thank you. Comments or questions for the design team? Ms. Cummings?
Just really briefly, it's interesting to see this design. I'm originally from Cleveland, Ohio, and I went home for the holidays. And Shaker Heights just recently did a very similar design with some of the same concepts, which is very interesting. They actually, and I have a picture to show, I could show you all after the meeting. They have a market, it's called a marketplace or market hall on their first floor. There is an ice cream shop. There is some, a couple high-end quaint small shops. Then there are Cleveland Clinic, I believe, if it's not Cleveland Clinic, it's University Hospital. One of the hospitals took a large portion of the, to have like office space. And at the very top level are some new apartments. So it's very interesting to see that we are actually, you know, doing something that another city is doing. When I saw it, I did not realize that it was something that we were considering as a concept, but I remember telling my sister, I thought it was really cool. And I took pictures of it because I was like, this is something really nice. Economic development, one of the conversations I know in one of the committees I sit on, we talk about the new ideas of mixed-use spaces and how do we make them better. And what I also liked, what I liked about it was the green space, because that's something else, you know, a lot of times the green space gets lost in some of these. So I'm just kind of tickled to see us do something on the level of what I had already seen visually more recently, so.
I would say that I think the thing that caught my eye the most was the massing of the building that you referred to. It does not look like a monolithic building. It looks like a cluster of buildings, and I think that's really important. And you have very strongly referenced the design guidelines that were put in place in the master plan with the arcade at street level, the setback at the third, fourth, and fifth floor so that the building doesn't overpower the street. You have that nice setback on it. The materials being used, the brick and I'm assuming it's metal panels.
There's still some discussion of what the panel material is going to be.
The amount of brick in it, I think, reflects the historic character of the uptown area and is compatible with that. You know, we're never had the intention of rebuilding old buildings, especially when we're looking at 20,000 square feet because there weren't any. So I think, and the tenant mix, although we don't know what the retail is, the office tenant mix and the demand for that tenant mix in the uptown area is very encouraging. Ms. Lorenz?
Hi, I have a couple of comments, two about sort of design issues and one about the labor portion of it. We had one of our commenters this evening speak about local labor. Is that your intent at this point to utilize the local labor? And the reason I ask is because I think that is a very important part to the economic benefit of a project like this. So we like to put to work the people that live here because then that gets the gears of the economy going and they can go out and buy things and shop things and, you know, move into new homes or things of that sort. So thoughts on that first?
Yes, our intent is to use as much local labor as possible. When we come to a town, a new town, we like to do like a contractor outreach type of, a lot of times two or three of those, to really get engagement from our local contracting community, what kind of skill sets, you know, what kind of different trades that they do and the skill sets they have to make sure that when we put this out to bid, that they're an invited bidder on that project. It would not be our intent to bring contractors from our area to build this project. We want to make sure that it's local as possible. Sometimes you get kind of a specialty item that maybe someone right here in town doesn't do, so that may stretch out to a little bit further footprint. That happens on most projects, but definitely our intent is to hire all local.
So then the other two items have more to do with design. And one is on the actual facade itself. And John, I think you spoke to the architectural design on the outside with the ornamentation on the brick. You know, I'm not an artist, I'm not an architect, so I'm just going to say what my initial reaction was, is that it seemed minimal in terms of the ornamentation. So the more, in my opinion, the more that you can blend and add to that character of the outside of the building such that it does blend as you go up with what's up the street, the better. And especially in light of the fact that, you know, there's been a lot of consternation around the removal of buildings that have been there for quite some time. So I just offer that as one person's opinion. And then the other piece to this, I just want to speak to also having to do with the outside of the current building, and that is the mural. And I want to offer, much the way I think Ms. Cummings, just, you know, we travel around to different cities and we pick up experiences, so I want to offer this experience. Many know that I'm an alum of Purdue University, my son is there now. And, you know, universities of that sort of any size really, you know, take buildings down all the time, you know, some that have been there for many, many years. And one case there was the old power plant, iconic, right? Smokestack, you know, everybody knew, go to the smokestack, you found your way to the engineering quad. That was torn down. I mean, it was just, you know, tear your heart out kind of thing, right? What they did in its place, so the analogy here is to the mural in terms of an emotional existing piece of structure. What they did there, and I offer it up as an example, is they paid homage in a way to the story of the power plant inside the new building. So the power plant's gone, the smokestack is gone, everything's gone. However, almost in a museum sort of way, on the first floor of the building, the new building, which is a library learning center of sorts, they pay tribute on an entire wall to what used to be there. And interestingly, my grad student's son says, Mom, I learned more about the power plant in the new building because of the story that they told about it. So I offer that up again as just an idea that may be part of, whether that's part of the Bush design of the building or whether that would be something that the tenants would take on, I'm not sure where those lines start and end. But I think with the amount of discussion and outpouring about the mural, that might be something to think about to incorporate into the building.
Further comments or questions for the team here? Okay, well, there's no action required here tonight, and thank you for the update. It's an exciting project. It's a vital project for our community, and we wish you best of luck moving forward. We know it won't go without a glitch. We know it won't go without a glitch, and I did have one question I was going to ask, and it's not, I know you, because of the complexity of the building, there's likely to be a fair amount of union labor engaged in that. Has Bush, and I'm not asking you to do that on this project, but just for my information, has Bush ever entered into project labor agreements with, on projects?
We have, we have done those in the past. In our area, that's called an impact agreement, same concept, we've done quite a few of those in our community, and we've done PLAs with like the state of Illinois for projects with them on university work, so we have done.
Great. Well, thank you. We will move on to the next item here, if I can find my agenda, which is an ordinance approving amendment number one to the redevelopment agreement with Bush Development LLC having to do with Trail East. Move approval.
Second.
Comments from staff before we go, or should we go right into council?
No, I'll just introduce some of the details in this particular agenda item. Now that we've gone past the design and the schedule, what staff is asking council to authorize tonight is an amendment to the redevelopment agreement. The redevelopment agreement was originally adopted in October, and what we are presenting here reflects a slight modification associated with the developer's increased cost for the project. And as was mentioned, the project now incorporates 106 East Beaufort, which is the Windy City Wieners project, so the developer has incorporated that and is moving forward with the acquisition of that building. And also, as mentioned, the 13,000 square feet on the north part of the first floor incorporates a food hall, which includes quite a bit of investment and added expense with the developer. So, the report recognizes that the original proposal that we saw from Bush way back in February of last year and was incorporated in the October redevelopment agreement reflects their investment of 29.2 million, that has now grown to about 30 million or so. So, staff is recommending two amendments. The first is the entire TIF increment is part of the incentive package. Previously, in October, we talked about retaining a portion of that to reimburse ourselves. Now, we're talking about giving the entire TIF increment to Bush. The second change is a relatively modest rebate of 50% of the retail sales tax that is generated from the food hall area. So, those two modifications are part of this change.
And there is a time limit and a dollar amount certain?
That is true. In terms of the sales, on both items actually, but in terms of the sales tax, there's a maximum of $250,000, or five years from the date the food hall starts operation, so there is a limit on that. In regard to the TIF rebate, that is through the life of the TIF. I believe that ends in 2039, 2039. So, there is a time certain on that. The dollar amount is based on our estimates because the incentive is dependent on the success of the project. And so, the TIF increment is generated by the equalized assessed value of the property, and the sales tax rebate amount is generated by the success of the retailer. So, in regard to a couple of comments that we heard during public comment, if it's all right, I'll respond to those and answer any questions you might have. One of the comments was that in our council report, we missed information concerning any discount factors or net present value factors or any time figures. Perhaps we could have been clearer in our report, but I think on pages both 9-1 and 9-2, we talk about the rebate in terms of the timeline for the sales tax being the five-year maximum or $250,000, whichever comes first. In regard to the TIF, we referenced the life of the TIF on both pages, 9-1 and 9-2. We didn't specifically say the year, probably could have been clear on that, but the, later on, when we talk about what is the uptown TIF and how does it relate to the Trail East project, we do reference the TIF timeline. So, that could perhaps have been clear, but we felt like we've been explaining quite a bit in terms of the October report and perhaps even this report, the timeline in terms of the TIF increment. The, there was a suggestion that this, that an opportunity zone would be more appropriate. I just want to point out to council that that doesn't apply. The community, both Normal and Bloomington, worked with the Economic Development Council and the Chamber of Commerce to submit opportunity zone requests, I guess, or a list of suggestion locations to the governor's office last year. The governor's office recommended an opportunity zone that did not count for, did not consider uptown. It was basically Illinois State University, so that has been, and some properties just to the north of the university. So, that is not an option because it was not designated as an opportunity zone. The, another comment in terms of an abundance of office space in town and there's no need, and our proposal, when we issued a request for proposals in December of 2016 for this site, we simply indicated a multi-use, a request for multi-use property, including a certain classification of office space. The, according to Bush, we understand that they have this, their commercial space is under about 70% letter of intent to occupy, so apparently there is a need, that is their There was a reference about the economy's different these, today, and from when we first adopted the plan, actually, the council adopted the downtown renewal plan, actually, now it's the uptown renewal plan way back in 2003, and we agree, the economy has changed quite a bit since then, but because we have gone through a recession and such, and as we know, our uptown has been successful because of our public-private partnerships. And so, because of our debt that we've incurred, that has generated, our 90 million or so of debt, generated 140 million of private investment, and we've been very proud of that. That was part of our story in terms of our extension of the life of the TIF back in May of last year. So, in terms of taking the property off the tax rolls, I already referenced that, we, yes, we did acquire the property in 2006 for the purpose of going through this project at some point. And then, there was a comment specifically about new market tax credits and their application to this project, and I just wanted to point out for council's reminder that we do not control new market tax credits. That's a financing tool that we are not part of, so those are sort of the highlights.
Thank you. Comments, questions? Ms. Cummings?
Yes, I have just a couple clarifying questions, really. My first one is, can you tell me the percentage of the 3P that we will be responsible for total, if you know it? And then, oh, let me clarify with 3P, public-private partnership, I'm sorry, for those who may not know what 3P is. And then, make sure I understand, just for clarity's sake, the food hall, their incentive is really also kind of like to assist local business incubator in a sense, correct? So, this would be also a good way to show that we encourage small business and local development in that space, correct?
Yes. Yes, that is true. In regard to, I'll probably ask Andrew to come forward, but in regard to the town share of the public-private partnership, what our full amount is, I'll explain, and Andrew can The original proposal was the developer would put in a project, the cost of 29.2 million is closer to 30 million, that does not take into consideration the cost of borrowing money. So, I don't know, after a commercial loan, what that 30 million equates to in terms of the actual cost of the project. I don't know.
Mostly because I know, you know, when we, or I should say myself, and when I've talked to other people who are into economic development, it's really considered, and I get the dollars, people want to hear the dollars, but across this country, when you get to talking about economic development and whether something is a good deal, we talk in percentages. So, what is the percentage that we are delving into versus what is being covered to better understand from an economic development perspective? Are we kind of where we commonly see, or are we above, are we less? That's all I'm just trying to get a grasp of.
Right, and I have dollars. Andrew, do you, do you have access to the percentage-wise?
Yeah, I can share that. I guess in terms of looking at that number, it's a $30 million project. The towns, the value of the towns' contribution from the TIF rebate is about $4.5 million as of today, so that's about 15% in terms of, if you want to categorize it that way. That's our investment in the overall project cost. 15% in what I've seen in the past and other, and my colleagues, and Sally, I can speak to this too, Sally Hufnir, that's fairly appropriate in terms of the average. We've been below that in many projects, we've been above that in other projects, but this one is at 50%, and we're quite comfortable with that level of investment in terms of P3 contribution.
Thank you.
Mr. Preston?
Yeah, I'm not sure who to direct this first question to, but I guess I will do it towards staff. Wondering, focusing really on 106 East Beaufort, and the addition of that into this larger project now in comparison to when we had taken this up originally back in October, do we know, I'm sure we do, how much additional total square footage is Bush building as part of Trail East now that they have the 106 parcel as well that will be included in this project?
I can defer to Bush. I'm not sure the overall square footage has changed that much, it's been reconfigured a little bit. So, I think it's still close to the overall 120,000?
And that still could grow with the addition of, you know, we're still negotiating additional space for our second floor tenant, and wants potentially another 5,000 feet that's not accounted for yet, so that footage could even be a little.
Okay.
I think what they're saying is that had they not acquired 106, that they would have had to change the floor plan to accommodate what they thought was a viable amount of square footage for the project, it would just be somewhere else on the building, and now, so they're rearranging it so that they can move to the street side, is that correct?
That's correct. What 106 adds to the project is a much more efficient layout. There was a whole lot of additional cost going into working up adjacent to that building in order to be able to retain it, and then working on the other side of it for the demolition for the pedestrian walkway at that location. And then, that in turn was decreasing the amount of available parking and the site amenities on the site still further in order to be able to accommodate the amount of square footage in any given floor plate for the pre-existing letters of intent.
Okay. I guess, as a follow-up since it was mentioned, if the addition of 106 creates much more efficient as a result, you know, saves some of the added expense on trying to work around the building, why is the 270,000 that we would not be, present value that we would not be reimbursing ourselves, why is that needed then?
That would not be for me to answer.
Right. The, there is added cost, though, certainly to the acquisition of 106 and still the build-out of the food hall space. And this does not, you know, the construction costs does not take into consideration the unknown. So, this is just based on, such as, one thing I read in an article or a posting was increased cost of steel, if that, if there's an increased cost of steel, that is not incorporated in this. This is just purely the expenses they know today.
One thing that I can offer to that is that in the original conception, the north section of the building where the food hall is located was at-grade parking underneath, so that was not an enclosure in the building. So, there is an additional 13,000 square feet of leased space going into the building that was not there before. It was all exterior space with just parking in that location. So, that's a driving factor in, between what we saw in February, March, and where we are today.
Thanks. Questions, comments? Mr. McBride?
So, these are all comments and just thoughts, and Mr. Fritz and I have been kind of watching each other scratch out notes over the last 45 minutes or so, and we'll see what that produces. So, tonight, I, along with my colleagues here, we've had our sanity question, we've had our integrity question, that's always fun. So, let's talk for a second about what integrity is not. Integrity is not being so brazen as to assume that you speak for everyone. Integrity is not assuming that your perception of wants versus needs matches everyone's. Integrity is not repeating with absolute certainty that things that have been proven demonstrably untrue, just repeating them. So, what is integrity? I mean, I try to live my life with integrity, I know all of my friends appear to as well. Integrity is being forthright and transparent with your motivations and your intentions, and that's something I've certainly tried to do, certainly as this project has moved forward. Integrity, at the end of the day, is doing the right thing for the right reasons, knowing that it's never possible to make everyone happy. And I know that wherever we go with this, it's not going to make everyone happy, that's simply not possible. We've heard, I think, you know, very passionate legitimate concerns about historic preservation, but the fact remains, the town has a very strong record when it comes to historic preservation. Never perfect, I get that, but very strong nonetheless. So, a question was asked earlier, what kind of community do we want to be? Well, I think we want to be a vibrant community. I think we want to be a forward-looking community. I think we are a vibrant and forward-looking community. I think we are a community that plans ahead, and I think we're a community that doesn't settle. So, think about that in context to this project. With all that said, I'm very happy to see it move forward. Couple of facts to keep in mind, the construction jobs that this project will bring are a big deal, the permanent jobs that this will bring to uptown are a big deal, and there's been a lot of talk about TIFs and allegedly taking funding away from other taxing bodies. It's been repeated several times, the parking lot owned by the town, the buildings owned by the town aren't generating any tax dollars for anyone. So, let's look ahead, as we do so well, a couple of decades, and consider that once the TIF runs its course, what a development like this will add to our EAV and what that will generate for all the taxing bodies, including the schools, on an annual basis. That's what we're doing here tonight, we're looking ahead, we're looking 20, 25 years in the future, and that, I think, at the end of the day, is one of our most important jobs. So, all that said, I'm very happy to see this moving forward. Thank you.
You? Further comments on this? I would add, although not as skillfully as you did, Mr. McBride, that I've learned in my job as mayor that you have to take a long-term approach on projects that you do in the community and the long-term benefit. We're not looking for the benefit that arrives next week, we're looking at benefit that arrives sometime in the future, but has elastic impact on the taxing bodies, as you said. I think the important thing is that the tenants that are coming into this building want to be in uptown. There's a reason for that, and you can ask them when they come, but they want to be here. It's not like they're being enticed or dragged in here, they understand what is happening in the uptown area, they want to be a part of it. I've been told by two of the companies that are moving there that it's actually a recruiting benefit for them, because people that they are bringing in, the high-caliber people that they're bringing into the organizations, want an environment like uptown Normal. So, we're just helping them leverage that. I think also, too, there's been a that they're bringing into the organizations, want an environment like Uptown Normal. So, we're just helping them leverage that. I think also too, there's been a lot of discussion about Uptown One being a dismal failure, and it's just not true. It is true that the ground floor of that building did not go forward as planned, recessionary times had something to do with that. We're in active discussion with the developer on that, with a plan, and I'm sure you'll hear about it in a few months going forward. He has some ideas that are different than what he originally planned for that building. He thought that he could get an 8,000 square foot restaurant in that property, he couldn't. So, to say that the building is a failure is not, is just simply not true. And it wasn't said here tonight, but it's been said in the public quite a bit, the building is empty. The building is not empty. Best information we have, 17 out of the 21 units are rented, and likely will be fully rented in six months to a year. Buildings like that don't fill overnight, it takes time, it's what they call the absorption rate of a real estate project, and the building's doing quite well, thank you. So, I am also very excited about moving this project forward. It brings a lot to the community, it's going to bring tax dollars, it's going to bring people shopping into our community. The workers, hundreds of workers that are going to be there every day will be eating and shopping and entertaining themselves in our Uptown area, and will actually build economic prosperity for the community going forward.
Ms. Lorenz?
Just very quickly, I want to tag on to something Mr. McBride said about the increased EAV, and draw attention to the public on a report that is accessible, page 9-10 and 9-11 is a nice page and a half overview of TIF funding specifically for this project, but it's kind of a nice reminder about how TIF funding works. And in that page and a half, it does talk about how the Uptown District as we know it now, speaking to your point, Mayor, about its success, has increased property values by 180% higher than in other parts of the town. So, you know, the end of that TIF is 2026, so that, you know, as we sit here in 2019, that doesn't seem that far off. And those benefits forever and ever will then begin to flow into the school districts and the other taxing bodies. So, it starts to feel a little more closer than way off, you know, as sometimes TIF districts when they're first started seem 23 years away, and that seems, you know, beyond our lifetimes at times, you know, but as this one is maturing, and we're starting to see the benefits roll in, it's pretty close. So, just wanted to add to that.
Thank you. Further on this item? Mr. Fritz?
Not a lot, just a couple of things to fill in, thanks. I think a couple of things that are encouraging here is, and, you know, it's up to the companies that are, that have the agreements, the letters of intent signed to roll out their announcements when it's time for them to roll out their announcements, but the things we've heard, you know, one of the encouraging things is, not only do they want to locate an Uptown Normal, but they want to stay in Bloomington Normal and grow in Bloomington Normal. And so much has been said about, you know, our largest employer, State Farm, with all the changes they've made and are still making, and yet, let's not lose sight of the fact that there are still some solid foundational companies that are investing in the community. And State Farm is investing greatly in the community. The building's not as open as it used to be, the corporate headquarters, but State Farm has made significant investment in changing the nature of that building. One of the reasons, exactly what you talked about, these prospective companies coming to Uptown, to attract younger, young talent, today's talent. So, they've changed the nature of their corporate headquarters, you can't see it when you drive down Veterans Parkway, but the interior of that building has changed in a significant manner over the last several years. So, real estate gets old, it gets tired, and it has to be changed, upgraded, or you move to find something that better suits your needs. State Farm left a 13-story building up downtown Bloomington, you know, for that very reason. That building is built for a different era, and it's going to be a difficult building to repurpose, but, you know, so I think we need to, you know, make sure we don't lose sight of that. I think too, the, we're losing 108, and best I can, the best I can recall is that where Willard, that's where Willard Martin's barber shop was.
Yes, it was, that's right.
And, I'm right? Okay, thanks. So, used to go to West Point there about every other week, I think, probably because you had to keep it really short and just have that little stuff on the front that the Brill Creamer Vitalis laid over for you. So, I'm going to miss Willard Martin's, the fact that Willard Martin's Barber Shop is no longer going to be in Uptown Normal, but I'm not going to miss it much. And I think, you know, again, the historic, historic preservation, historic value, you know, those words and those things get tossed around a lot, and it was referred to earlier by one of the speakers, you know, that, yeah, yeah, I will hear that old doesn't necessarily mean it's historic. Well, it doesn't necessarily mean historic. And I think what's happened to Uptown Normal in the last two decades is historic. And again, we probably won't be around, I probably won't be around to know whether people look back on it in that manner, and it's not for us to say that it is, declare that it is, but it sure has that feel, and to continue to be moving forward 20 years down the road from the concept to implementation, you know, for this project to still be moving forward says a lot about the viability of that project, but also again, about our community and what people's beliefs are in our community. So, I'm for it, you know, a slight adjustment at this point in time in the agreement, you know, when we first started talking about this, the idea of a food court had never even surfaced. And so now, you know, that's, you know, the idea that there's space available that wasn't available before helped someone who is, has an idea, and they want to put some wheels under that idea, and now they have that opportunity. So, these are opportunities, and we don't know what opportunities are lost if we don't proceed with some of these things. So, I think it's important that we keep moving forward and try to maintain as much momentum as we can, because it's almost impossible to get it back once you lose it.
And thank you for reminding me on the historic aspect of this, I'd said it in a previous meeting, and I will remind people again, that the town of Normal has spent significant dollars, significant dollars on 22 historic properties in the Uptown, helping businesses stabilize and revitalize their storefronts, the Normal Theater. We have invested and protected significant historic assets in this community, it's not like returning our backs on historic preservation.
And not just Uptown. Not just Uptown.
Not just Uptown. Further? Please call the rule.
Mrs. Cummings?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. Fritz?
Aye.
Mr. McBride?
Aye.
Mayor Kous?
Aye. The ordinance is approved. We move to item 10, a resolution waiving the formal bid process and authorizing the city manager to negotiate an agreement through the Farnsworth Group for the removal and relocation of the mural from 104 East Beaufort Street, and to seek indemnification for any associated costs.
Your rule.
Thank you.
Second.
Comments on this one?
Yes, just a few. Obviously, we've talked quite a bit about the project this evening. This will be the last item on the agenda pertaining to Trail East, obviously, tonight, but staff is seeking council support of this proposed resolution as basically to keep the process moving forward. We do not believe that we are going to have to remove and relocate the mural. We still believe that the best plan and the appropriate plan is to demolish the mural when the building is demolished. But because of the question regarding the Visual Rights, Visual Artist Rights Act, and any potential legal responsibility we may have associated with that mural, we are asking council to adopt this resolution in the event we find we have to remove and relocate. The proposal does not include costs associated with transportation, because we don't know where it would go if we had to do this, so there are a number of things that would have to be determined as we move forward, but we're asking council support of this action in the event we find we have to do this, and that does then allow Bush to continue on in their process. As you saw earlier, we have a lot of timelines and meeting dates that we're trying to work with them on. And then, back to this resolution, if we find that we do have to remove and relocate, we would seek reimbursement from the former tenants of the space. So, that's the purpose of asking council for this action tonight.
Okay. Comments or questions?
Question?
And I know that this has been discussed before, and we're not there yet, obviously, because the Bureau's still there, but I know others have suggested, I believe some of us has suggested investigating some sort of high-resolution photography and some sort of replication of the mural somewhere, somehow, that remains a possibility.
That does. In fact, just today, I had a conversation with a professional photographer about that. I don't yet know if that meets any legal obligation we may have, but that is certainly an option. We also believe that a number of people have already photographed it and used it for other purposes, because we've seen postcards of the mural and such, so it exists, we just don't know who's done it. But yes, we are exploring that as a possibility. The other thing that we failed to mention, getting back to design, but the design team talked about that walkway through, from Beaufort sidewalk back to the parking lot to the north of that area, and you saw the graphic of that, the area is sort of screaming for some art, so we think that there are going to be opportunities for other public art along the way.
Questions or comments? Ms. Cummings?
Thank you. I guess I, I don't know if I can say I'm concerned, but do we also have thoughts, or is there something there? Because I understand if we do a removal and a relocation, my concern is with what I have read about the whole ideal of this tuck pointing, we go to remove it, there is a high, and I mean very high likelihood, of it not even surviving the removal. I'm concerned, I'm slightly concerned of us paying for this to only, you know what I'm saying, we paid to get it removed, and we go through all of that for something that we probably can't save, you know, or even relocate. Help me to, I guess, wrap my mind around, is this, is it just a just-in-case? Have we fully looked at the statutes to see what our other options are? I just, for me, am nervous to think about us putting money towards something that we, you know, we pay to get it removed, it crumbles, we've, in a sense, wasted money, because the idea was to move to relocate it versus just the cost of it being demolished. I know we would hate to see it go, but at the same time, you know, people talk about wasting money, knowing what I know about tuck pointing and what's needed, a lot of times what happens are the bricks are so fragile, you go to remove it, it'll crumble.
Well, we do have some experts here in the audience who can specifically refer to that, but I believe that's why there's such a large scope in the proposal, dollars, anywhere from 51,000 or to, or 55,000 or so to 81,000 is a big range, because I think they would get in there and, it's a specialty contractor who would do that sort of thing. So, certainly the expectation would is they know how to preserve the materials and would relocate it accordingly. But I'll defer to Brian on that.
Yeah, absolutely. We went into this when we got the proposal from Farnsworth with every expectation that this would be able to be moved, we're not expecting it to fall apart. And part of this is, they did find a specialty contractor, renovation contractor who does this type of work. In fact, they usually move whole buildings, not just parts of them. So, certainly, we're going in with every intention that this would be a perfectly possible project, and we would expect that it would work.
The other thing though, that, and certainly we would support, if the wall were to remain, it does need to be tuck pointed, that doesn't change the fact. So, if a portion of the wall is removed, which is what we're talking about, because the mural doesn't cover the whole wall, it covers a portion, there would have to be some sort of solution, because the brick would have to be kept together.
Right, yeah, the irony of this is that the mural probably has a better chance of surviving if it's moved than if the building were to remain, just because of the condition of the building and what would have to be done to keep the building standing, so.
Thank you.
Further comments or questions? Please call the rule.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. Fritz?
Aye.
Mr. McBride?
Aye.
Mrs. Cummings?
Aye.
Mayor Kous?
Aye. The resolution is approved, we have one item of new business, a motion to approve an appointment to the Children's Discovery Museum Foundation Board. Motion for approval?
Rule. Second.
There will be no discussion on this, as it's an item of personnel unless a council member would like to take this to executive session, and seeing no such request, please call the rule.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. Fritz?
Aye.
Mr. McBride?
Aye.
Mrs. Cummings?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Kous?
Aye. Motion is approved. Mr. Fritz?
Yes, we're excited, I think, to welcome Mr. Rod, Rob Widmer, to our Children's Discovery Museum Foundation Board, most recently President of Heartland Community College, but before that at the college Business and Finance, so, I mean, this guy, this guy brings a lot to the board and has brought a lot to our community over the years. He's a grandparent to 11 grandchildren, and so has personally experienced the museum probably on many occasions, and is eager to join the board. Of course, his entire professional career's been associated with education, and that's one of our goals there with the Discovery Museum. He's been active with numerous other organizations, community, and will be a great asset to our foundation board, so welcome to Rob. His term will expire June 30th, 2021, as he's filling an open seat.
Thank you. That concludes our business here tonight. Before taking a motion for adjournment, are there comments or concerns?
I have, I've been talking a lot this meeting, so sorry about that, but I do have one thing I'd like to share, and I would like to introduce the new Assistant City Manager for the town of Normal, which is Eric Hanson. Today is day one for him, so, welcome to Eric, we're thrilled to have him join the team.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
Please call the rule.
Mr. Fritz?
Aye.
Mr. McBride?
Aye.
Mrs. Cummings?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mayor Kous?
Aye. We are adjourned.
Thank you.
I just want to be around to do my bit. I want to show these guys my picture. Here.